Good evening, everyone. With a form of the board president, I'd like to call that June 14, 2021 meeting of the Board of Education. I'm here for a school to order and begin by standing and placing the flag.
Let's see. It's July and the United States of America. And we do the Republic of Kansas, one nation, our individual, liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Again, good evening. I want to welcome a number of participants here this evening. We have a number of new teachers that will be pointing this evening here. So it's nice to see a few more people in the room with us. And we have some, well, one organization matters very important. And we'll welcome Mr. Hardesty and Ms. Whitmore if you would be honest with me.
I solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
Yeah, the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of School Board Member.
Of the Office of School Board Member.
Well, I'm sure you don't know everyone in time, but we'll have something to point out for the meeting. But yes, no more. We've got some presentations this evening. Mr. Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mannix. We, being a board member is a very difficult job. There are lots of hours, lots of nights that people don't see. Long hours, understanding what's happening, setting policy, working together as a team. And we have a remarkable team here at Queensberry. We're lucky. I'm so proud, but tonight I wanted to honor two board members. When you are a superintendent and you go through your first year into your second year, you're in the middle of a pandemic. You need a lot of support. You need teammates around you, people that you can count on. And I have always been able to count on the two people that I want to talk about tonight. First off, in attendance tonight, we have Joe Striver. And Joe has been with me for a long time. We have, I've known his family. I've had the luxury of getting to know him very, very well. He's spent countless hours working in support of the students here at Queensberry in Free School District. And I could not be more honored to call him a friend. He's committed to Queensberry, never lost sight of working hard, long hours. He was a member of our finance committee and really did a great job of understanding every nuance of the budget. Just a, just a gentleman. And so tonight, I, on behalf of the Queensberry Free School District, I have a gift for him. He's been a board member for eight and a half years. When you think about that, that's a long time to commit to one place and volunteer your time. So on behalf of us here at Queensberry, Joe, I would like to call you up. We have a token. We are so proud of you. Thank you very, very much for your service. The second individual, she's in her last meeting tonight, and it feels a bit odd for me because I've been with her for a long time. And I've gotten to know her family as well very closely. And she's been with me throughout my career and watched Negro. This is the position I'm in and has always been a strong supporter. I've always been able to talk to her about anything. She checks in on me and a true teammate, a true testament to what we hope to embody as a school board member at Queensberry. She's done just that. I'm sad to see her go because I, you know, because I am. But I'm going to miss her immensely. Kathy Holser has been with us for seven plus years. And I did have a little help in making this out, which I think she knows that about me. But please, can you give her a warm round of applause? She's done an amazing job as a board member here.
Mr. Mannix, I do have word before we go. I don't want to pick up too much to mean, but we do have a board member. And it's a monumental birthday tonight. I know they're online. I want to wish this boy a happy birthday tonight. It's a, I won't tell everybody, but it's a very special birthday for her. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Joe, congratulations, Kathy. Best wishes to you and her birthday. Thank you for all of that. And for you did for me and everybody. Thank you very much. So we have a couple more presentations. One regarding transportation. Again, that's going to be with Mr. Sipulitz, Mrs. DeJohn, Mr. Sapienza, and Ms. Jackman.
Before they start, Mr. Mannix, we, we have Janelle Sipulitz, Alex Sabianza, Marnie DeJohn have been doing their administrative internship this year. And we charged them with working on a professional development plan for our bus garage and for our drivers. And they took this very seriously. I think you'll see they work for Dan Jack and he's done an amazing job down in our transportation department. And tonight they're going to share the highlights, what we wanted with a comprehensive, Scott Whitmore, myself, Denise, and Amy. A comprehensive professional development plan in place. And I think you'll be mesmerized with that very work. So thank you, guys.
So, good evening, Queensberry Board of Education, District K-12. Thank you. Okay, start again. Good evening, Queensberry Board of Education, K-12 administrators, community members, and faculty members. My name is Janelle Sipulitz. I'm the K-12 Counseling Department Chairperson. And alongside me presenting tonight is Marnie DeJohn, Ivy Coordinator and Science Department Chairperson in the high school. Alexandra Sabianza, Queensberry Middle School Social Studies teacher. And Dan Jackman, trainer and supervisor from the Transportation Department. As Mr. Gannon said, we began a couple of months ago looking over a transportation improvement plan as part of our school building leadership internship. And we're giving you an update today as the work that we have started and the work that we will continue to do. We began to support because we want to support and unify the system between school buildings and transportation for the purpose of safety, student management, and conduct. And that was really our key purpose moving forward. And I've come over to our umbrella term of a couple of things that we have put into place. For example, we have come up with a formal mentoring program in the Transportation Department that mirrored the Queensberry Faculty Association mentor program that we have for educators. The purpose of this mentoring program is to give inexperienced to new drivers. The, the skills and talent of the experienced drivers can give a year-long mentoring program so that they have support in these areas. My co-presenters will be talking a little bit more about this in the future part of this presentation. We believe that our improvement plan really supports Board of Education goal number three, which says all members of our school community will maintain a campus-wide environment that will foster safety, empathy, and wellness. So those are the key components that we kept in mind throughout our transportation program. One of the areas that I focused on was the building level connection to the bus drivers. So between looking over our current conduct and referral report, updating it with distorted practices and language, and making sure that bus drivers felt as a part of our building, just as our classroom management skills work into bus management skills. So for example, what is a bus driver? Not, not only are they people that have spent 40-plus hours behind the wheel with training, credentials, reviews. They also adhere to the Q U F S D policies and compliance requirements, but they're also people that are student-focused, caring, compassionate, and show up every day to pick up our children and to bring them home. And they're patient and they're kind. And we want to make sure that they're equipped with tools to handle experiences that happen in the bus, much like they have been in the classroom. I'm going to turn things over to Alex Sabianza to talk a little bit more about the formal mentoring program. So this slide outlines how the mentor program, what it's designed to do along with its goals. And so the rationale behind creating the mentor program was to create a formal system that's going to support all drivers and provide opportunities for growth. It calls upon the experiences of some of our drivers who have been driving for several years to basically share their knowledge with the new drivers in the hopes of reducing the referrals and incidents on the buses. So along with the mentor being trained, we're also going to have mentees and a mentor coordinator. The mentor and the mentees are going to meet several times a month by requirement in the hopes that they're also meeting on a daily basis. But along with that, if they are not choosing to be a mentor or mentee, all bus drivers are going to get PAX school training, which is going to be on the first Friday of every month. So the mentor-mentee, it's going to be assigned based on experiences or need. Drivers are going to be asked to meet with their mentee formally several times a month. The whole goal is that they're able to form a relationship. They're going to discuss and reflect their PAX trainings that are going to be monthly. They're going to have opportunities to observe each other through modeling, riding each other's buses. And this is in the hopes of fostering an environment of continual professional development.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I've had the privilege of working with Janelle and Alex and Marnie over the, over the course of several months on this project. In recent years, we've seen student behavior change like wildfire, something that we haven't seen before. We're seeing complex, systematic, community-driven behaviors, not only in the school buildings, but in on our buses. The comprehensive mentoring program and the PAX tools that the ladies have so generously put their time into researching is so needed for our drivers and aides to move forward in transporting our kids safely, given the behaviors that we're seeing today. I want to thank them for all their time, their insight, but boy, I've learned a lot from them. And their willingness to take a peek into transportation. It's a beautiful world that transportation is because we get the best job in the world. And I appreciate the opportunity to present this to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. We would be remiss if we did not also thank you for your insights and all of the great things that you provided to us. Because really, we kind of felt that buses were something that we didn't have a lot of experience with on a regular basis. So I don't really think that this presentation would be what it is without Ann's help with us. I'm going to get to talk to you a little bit about PAX tools. It's actually a new training system. It is research-based and it is a positive behavior intervention system. But it's designed specifically for adults who are not teachers. So there's not a set curriculum that goes along with it. It is a series of strategies that have been found to be successful in managing children, encouraging them, and basically going with the positive behavior. So we will be, are fortunate enough that our Warren County Council for Prevention has a certified PAX trainer and will be available to train our drivers very early in the school year. All of the drivers will receive PAX training. And it's a two-hour training so that they can basically, you know, acquire these strategies. But it doesn't end there. The training actually continues once a month all year long, very similar to sort of like our teacher PLCs, where the bus drivers can discuss incidents that happened on their buses, discuss best practices, and basically kind of talk it out and maybe come up with some ideas and strategies to help with, with different things that have happened on their buses. So just basically to sum up, our two main programs that we came up with were the Bus Driver Formal Mentor Program and the PAX Tool Training. So not every driver will be a mentor or a mentee. Those will be drivers that are chosen specifically for those roles. But the PAX tools will be available to all of our drivers.
Anyone on the board have any questions for our representatives?
I do have a quick question. Is this?
Well, I'm sure it's a good surprise in the morning and last night. So it's really incredible looking forward to it. So thank you very much for taking the time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Actually, we have a presentation from Mr. Gannon, Stollstrom, Mr. Hooper, here. It's going to be about some money that we're getting from the state and the federal government, this budget here. Boarding in all about it.
Thank you, Mr. Mannix. So we have, when you see these two terms, you look at SERSA and ARP. So when you take a look at the next slide, SERSA means the Corona Virus Relief and Response Act. And what happens as a result of that, what money came to Queensberry or will be coming to Queensberry is about $3 million, a little over $3 million. And so this is happening very fast. We have to notify the public. We have to talk, survey, get notified, the Board of Education. But we were, we did very well. So the application for this money is due on June 15. And we're able to look back last year and look at the costs that were incurred for our school district around the coronavirus and look forward for the next two years. So we can encompass a money between salaries and PPE that we use, things like that, to be able to move forward and attain this money. When you look at the next slide, that's called the American Rescue Plan Act. So that's that, that's that AR, ARP that you'll see. And that right now will be, they've told us Queensberry has right now a little over $4 million coming to us. And it's in different buckets when you look at it. It's taken us a little while to understand. Mrs. Stollstrom became the resident expert on this. But what's going to happen? They've divided it out into this term called learning loss. And you know, we're not, we're not fond of those words, but $700,000 of that money has to be spent in that category. And that would be for looking at specific programs and specific interventions. So when you look at the ARP, you can see it can be spent on social and emotional learning. It can be spent on students with disabilities, homeless students. That's that category right there, learning loss. And there's your instruction category, your technology category, and your safety category. So when you think about that, it's, it's meant to prioritize. And basically you have to take a look, you have to get input from your stakeholders. So we put together a survey and we sent it out to all staff. And it will be on our website. It'll go out to our parents and our students, fourth grade through 12th grade, will also prioritize what they believe are needs for the district. So we'll get all of that information back and be able to take a comprehensive look. And we have to have this all done by July 1st and have an overarching plan for the district. So it's happening at a very fast pace, priorities. So we have to look at our history of funding. One of the things you don't want to do with this money is create a funding cliff for the future. So if you start putting this money into positions, you know that our current budget is what it is. This is to be spent on things that we can do as a school district that won't create that funding cliff for the future. But we can also take a look at the stakeholder input and see what everyone said, be able to take and look at all that information, work with our administrative team. We also know that we can spend money on our facilities. So that take, when you take a look at that, you, you look at our air sources, air handlers, and we can take a look at positions for a few years in it. So positions that we might need through 2024 when the funding ends. We know that, we want to take a look at our facilities in this. We want to make sure that we can also do professional development with our staff. We can look at our HVAC system. I'm sure John Dawes has, he's done a great job at digging into that. And be able to really take a look at training for the future, professional development for all people on our campus. Denise.
Thank you. So let's talk a little bit about curriculum instruction. And there's really two areas that we want to focus on. One is wellness, and that is where the funds are intended to go. And the other is equity. So what was really the experience of the learners during the pandemic? So wellness covers everyone, including, you know, staff, faculty, students. So how will we approach this? So one of the things that the funding calls for is to use evidence-based strategies to meet those needs. We know that this is important because our ESSA survey indicated really across the board that this was a strong interest from community, from parents, from students. So the other piece is equity. What does this look like? As Mr. Gannon said, we don't like the term learning loss. Maybe we would better be say interrupted learning. The other thing is not every single student had significant learning loss. There were many students who did not. And we were probably in school more than most area school districts on the day-to-day. So we would have to look at that. We have to use data to see where our students are moving forward and what they need. So what does this really look like? When we think about wellness, what will it look like? Well, it would most likely look like a systematic approach to wellness. So perhaps a K-12 program and then also addressing the needs of staff. Right now we have wellness committees in each building, but we would be looking to strengthen those committees and sort of broaden our approach for that. We would also look at specific programming, and that's why the survey is so important as we ask from our community members, which will be, Mr. Gannon will talk about in a little bit. And as we ask our faculty members and students. In addition, we all know that mental health is just at the forefront right now. There are a lot of individuals that have suffered greatly during this pandemic. And how will we approach this? So the question is, you know, how are people doing and what will we do in response to that? When we think about instruction, we need to think about next year and this year. I think we have done that, but how do we maximize instruction? So how do we assess where our students are and maximize that in-person learning? And while addressing that instruction that was interrupted or any unfinished learning that took place? We also have groups of students that are students with disabilities, students that are economically disadvantaged, certain subgroups that may have been suffering more and that might need more services as we return in September. So these are all things that we really need to look at. And these are things that the funding will ask us to do. And specifically in the ARP plan, they will be looking for how we will be spending this money. And a lot of that, like I said, will be programming. What can we offer after school? What can we offer before school? Additional clubs. So that equity in programming, giving students what they need. So this is actually, we're very fortunate that we can utilize this funding this way to really meet everyone's needs. So another piece of the pie is educational technology. And I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Hooper, who will tell you a little bit about that.
Thank you, Denise. And I know I've said this to the Board of Education before, but especially during this pandemic, where would we be without technology? It allows me to stream from three devices tonight, make sure our families are engaged with Board of Education meetings. But also it allows us to pivot and make sure that we're providing high-quality instruction even during a pandemic. So we feel very fortunate in this district due to the amazing planning from our administration team and our teachers that we have the infrastructure in place, we're one-to-one, we can pivot on a dime, and we can ensure that our kids at home are also receiving instruction as well. But part of the planning, and it makes sense that educational technology is a part of this funding, is that obviously technology is the future. But there are definitely some key areas that we want to focus on with, with some of this funding. And one of the areas is really securing and ensuring the future of cybersecurity infrastructure in our district. As you all know, that this is a very hot topic, especially in the news every single night with the Colonial Pipeline and then Cape Cod with the, you know, the ferries over there. It is something that is also impacting schools significantly. A school close to us down in Albany recently was shut down due to ransomware. We have schools all over, out in Rochester, Buffalo. This is becoming a pretty significant issue. It's something that we're working on and addressing. We feel very strong in our current systems, but there's also a new technology that offers increased protection. One of the other things the state is saying is that all schools, there's part of the recent educational law, 2D law, is that we have to implement the NIST cybersecurity framework. This is a national framework. It's a research-based, it's backed by the FBI and all sorts of government agencies. We have to implement that, and it's significant. There's a lot of layers to it, lots of things like big terms like endpoint encryption and all sorts of different things. And we're going to need hardware and software upgrades to ensure that we are not one of those schools that could be subject to attack. So that's certainly an area we want to look at. Of course, instructional technology, as I mentioned before, we feel very strong with the amount of instructional technology we're using. the amount of instructional technology we're using, our teachers are utilizing Chromebooks and all sorts of different software programs on a day-to-day basis. But we really want to look at, what's the future? That's a really fun part about my, my position, pre-pandemic and hopefully post-pandemic, is getting out there and learning professional development and getting to go to conferences and seeing really what's next. So, that's something that we certainly want to pay attention to, what's always on the horizon, to keep, you know, keep investing in the software, different things that we want to use with our students. I mentioned devices before, we are one-to-one, we're, we're, all of our teachers, all of our students. And we want to make sure, we've definitely learned some lessons during the pandemic. We want to ensure that our devices can meet the needs, the increased demands of, of really the day-to-day. And we definitely learned some things. And we've got some areas to grow with our devices in our district. And then, Mrs. Stolström commented on this as well, but we definitely have different groups, our homeless population, our economically disadvantaged, want to continue to break down barriers in school and home. We have an increase in need for hotspot devices, providing internet for our families. We have dozens and dozens of hotspots out in our community this year. We see that increasing need. So, we'd like to use this funding to make sure that our students have what they need. So, when they go home, they can also engage with the curriculum and content that's assigned for them in school. So, all of these I see as future key areas of things that we really need to pay attention to and potentially use the funding for as well.
Mr. Bannon. So, to conclude this presentation, we put together, the three of us, put together a video that we sent out to all staff, along with the survey. And it's, it'll be posted on our website tomorrow morning. The survey will be distributed tomorrow. We've got the deadline coming up. And then, by July 1st, the ARP plan has to be posted, and it has to be broad, but on the district website. But it encompasses all of those areas. So, it's happening at a fast pace, but the good news is, we did well financially. So, any questions for the board, from the board?
Questions? You move forward.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all for the presentation. Next portion of the meeting is open forum. For everyone who doesn't know, public participation is encouraged. There will be two open forums and provide opportunities to address the Board of Education. We ask participants to wish to speak during the first open forum. You write their name in the chat box. And when called upon, identify themselves and, if applicable, the organization they're representing. For clarity, we ask that all speakers identify the school-related matter or topic that they wish to discuss. In order to conduct business in a smooth, orderly, timely manner, open forum is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes, with three minutes' allocation each speaker. Again, we appreciate public attendance and participation at the meetings. So, with that, Mr. Looperinger, do we have any people who would like to speak in open forum?
We don't have anything at this time, Ms. Mannix. Okay, in the chat.
Right. How many people do we have on the line?
We have 35 participants.
Okay. Second, I guess we'll move on to the first section here of business items. Assistant Mr. Looperinger, would you want?
Right, depending on the board group, business item A, motion set for results of May 18, 2001 budget vote for educational arts.
Motion, please. Any discussion on the board or on this motion? I'm sorry. Very none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, are you opposed? Any objections? Motion carries.
Recommended board group business item, motion approved, federal bond revolution related to four, four. No debate, we'll call it.
Have a motion, please. Kathy.
Aye.
Second, Pat.
Yes.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we're gonna pick a roll call vote this morning. Rusty Bellman.
Aye.
Rusty Cannon.
Aye.
Rusty Flair.
Aye.
Rusty Hardesty.
Aye.
Rusty Holster.
Aye.
Rusty Mannix.
Aye.
Rusty Lloyd.
Aye.
Aye.
Rusty Weaver.
Aye.
Recommended board group business item C, related to the incorporation of reserves at campus visiting year.
I have a motion, please. Second.
Second, Pat.
Thank you, Pat. Any discussion on motion C? Very none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Are you opposed? Any objections? Motion carries.
Recommended board group business item D, motion related to creating a section 47 of IRS code, all very participation from retired.
Have a motion, please. Kathy. Second, please. Stacy. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Are you opposed? Any objections? Motion carries.
Recommended board group business item E, motion related to the granting of easement to the town of Queensberry related to the sewer project, project along the nation road at present.
Have a motion, please. Kathy, second.
Second.
Stacy. Any discussion on the motion? Everyone read about this in the prior report? We talked about this parts, kind of made a good plan for the future, okay. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any objections? Motion carries.
Recommended the board group business item F, motion set for resignation for higher purpose of board staff plus records, here, appreciation regret type of I-8.
A motion, please.
So moved.
Kathy, Amy, is that you?
It was Pat.
Second. Any discussion on motion now? Open forum, vote in the wood. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any objections? Motion carries.
Recommended the board group business item D, motion set for resignation for higher purpose of oral home law leaders, here, appreciation, regret effect of seven months.
Motion, please. Kathy. Any second? Kathy. Any discussion on motion G? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Are you opposed? Any objections? Motion G carries.
Recommended board group business item C, through O.
In the items, agenda. Page through O, these are your movements, guys. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Kathy. Second, I got a third. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Any objections? Item H through O. Mr. Bannon.
Mr. Mannix, I recommend the board move to approve action item A, motion put up the resignation for retirement purposes of Debbie Dashon, WHS alternative education teacher, a sincere appreciation and regret.
Have a motion, please. Kathy. Second, please. Stacy, thank you. Any discussion on motion A? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Are you opposed? Any objections? Motion carries.
Action item D, I recommend the board move to approve the following probationary appointment, Caroline Conley, WHBI grade five.
Motion, please. Second. Kathy, thank you. Any discussion on motion B? Very none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Any objections? Motion B carries.
Caroline, can you please wave your board? For action item C, I recommend the board move to approve the following probationary appointment of Nikki Crowe, four-year probationary appointment as a QMS staff teacher.
Have a motion, please. Kathy. Second. There. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Are you opposed? Any objections? Motion C carries.
Nikki, congratulations. Action item D, I recommend the board move to approve the following probationary appointment of Riley Dunn, four-year probationary appointment as a grade five special education.
Have a motion, please. Thank you, Kathy.
Second, Pat.
Kathy. Any discussion on motion D? Very none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Any objections? Motion D carries. Riley, quickly for the board, motion carries.
Action item E, I recommend the board move to approve the following probationary appointment of Tanya Hartman, four-year probationary position as a QES kindergarten teacher.
Motion, please. Thank you, Kathy. Second.
Second, Pat.
Stacy, that's ahead of you, though.
That's all right.
Any discussion on A? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Any objections? Motion E carries.
Action item F, I recommend the board move to approve the following probationary appointment of Rachel Pianos, four-year probationary position as a QES kindergarten teacher.
Motion, please. Thanks.
Summer.
Thank you, Amy. I'll take that as a second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Are you opposed? Any objections? Motion carries.
I recommend the board move to approve action item G, Alyssa Tarantino approve a probationary appointment, three-year probationary appointment, as a WHBI grade four teacher.
Motion, please. Thank you, Kathy. Second, please.
Aye.
Kathy, thank you. Any discussion on motion D? Very none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Are you opposed? Any objections? Motion G carries.
Action item H, I recommend the board move to approve the following revised long-term appointment substitute of Lendo or WHS long-term substitute art.
Motion, please. Second. Second. Thank you, Mike. Any discussion on motion A? Very none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Any objections? Motion E carries.
I recommend the board move to approve action item I, motion to approve the appointment of Molly McKee, QES substitute teacher effective 5/24/21.
Motion, please. Kathy, second.
Second.
Any discussion on motion I? Very none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Are you opposed? Any objections? Motion carries.
Action item D, I recommend the board move to approve the motion to approve the long-term substitute teacher appointment of Taylor Tilford, QES grade three.
Motion, please. Thank you, Kathy. Second.
Second, Pat.
Thank you. Any discussion on motion J? Very none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Are you opposed? Any objection? Motion J carries.
I recommend the board move to approve educational consent items K through II. I think that II or O.
I, right.
II.
Sorry.
Board move to approve educational consent items K through II.
Motion, please. Our action, or we need to have a item poll for provision. Motion, please. Kathy. Second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Any objections? Consent items K through II, carries. Board committee reports. Let's see, committee meeting today?
We did. I'll do the best I can to keep it short because there was a lot of information that a lot of information went over, but there was a safety audit done in conjunction with needum in regards to the storage of supplies in our district and power selection. The audit will be reviewed and by the yard department on June 1st, 3:30. They'll make recommendations of what to do there. There was lead testing done, except for the concession stand area of the district. Only one place has been moved. At a level that was slightly above 15 parts per billion, which is the normal step up to say. However, the state will lower in that minimum, from 15 parts per billion to five parts per billion sometime soon. There will be OSHA training for all within staff. They'll be receiving 30 hours of OSHA training on a variety of topics. There also being some asbestos training. We're gonna try and train workers and supervisors to handle asbestos problems in the district. Instead of calling in a big firm and doing it. Example was asbestos pile popped up. Instead of calling a big firm and doing it, we can train someone in the district, we can save money by having them come in and handle whatever they need to do to get rid of the asbestos. There also needs some maintenance and awareness staff training to recognize and report problems around the district, kind of like you can see it, say something. We had a review of the door emergency contacts in the district. Right now, contacts, if there's not a contact for longer than five minutes, then maintenance staff is going to invite somebody to go and inspect the door. We also talked about building lockdowns. There's, there's going to be installation of blue lights around the district, on the buildings, so that if people are outside and the blue light's flashing, they know that that building is in lockdown and they will take appropriate action. Some programs, they're gonna replace all the PA speakers on the interior and exterior of middle school. Install new cameras in the interior and exterior of middle school. And install 18 new cameras in the high school area where coverage is insufficient. And install eighteen new cameras in the high school area where the coverage is insufficient. Queensberry is evidence or the agreement with SUNY and Rondack as an emergency evacuation facility. If the school district needs to evacuate, they'll use the gymnasium over at SUNY and Rondack that can hold two thousand and lecture halls that can hold about. And they're in the process of scheduling a full-scale evacuation, you know, at some point during the school year twenty-one, twenty-two, that has yet to be decided on whether it's going to be. We're talking about the district-wide safety plan, with a revision done during the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. There are two components of it. One is the, the building safety plan, which is confidential, but however the district-wide program will be revised. And we post on the website, the whole segment, the community and school input will be there to make changes or address concerns of the policy that's already there. All in book, the draft changes can be made accordingly. There are two additions to this plan, one is the school resource officer, what their job entails, what they can, you know, do, and then second part is the pandemic operation plan. That only we can go on and done pretty good job this year. So that's all for the safety committee.
Thank you, Brad. Any other committees, I know the facility met, but anybody else? Facility committee met last week, like week before, about ten days ago. In any event, there was a very brief discussion about the project that we're anticipating bringing to the community later this year, December, perhaps January, but with the recent notice of increasing funding, perhaps that will help us increase this goal for the project and offset some costs. There was again, certain money, so new and undefined, it was just a very brief discussion that there might be an opportunity for us. We talked more length with town of Queensberry representatives about what we took action on tonight. We got some questions going about that meeting, those questions were answered, and so we're able to take the action tonight as far as the easement along our eastern border of the Northway. And it's a makeup completion in a year and a half or so. It's a, it's going to be an important project. And we also spent a very limited amount of time, maybe ten minutes or so, conceptually talking about a turf field sometime in the future. Where can we put it? How big could it be? Could we multi-use it with our lighting in other parts of the district? But again, it's just a very brief discussion, but certainly want to bring it to the board attention, clearly, but again, there were no specifics at all discussed and certainly no decisions made. Again, it took about ten minutes of meeting, but I think that's about all we discussed. Facilities wanted to do, but everything else seemed papered through. Any other committees? I answered. All right, the next section will be board member comments. Board member comments? Weaver?
First, I'd like to thank Joanna and Kathy for their years of service, their dedication to this district, the hour that they put in. Thank you very, very much. It was appreciated. Best of luck. Second, I'd like to also thank, or not thank, but congratulate the girls cross team for their victory today. Seventeen, well, seventeen-eleven. Powerhouse, they're, they're fine tuned machine. Two men didn't have the next step to go to and mostly the play, but against mitigate share their, their impressive, congratulations to them.
Any other comments? Should be, well, we have board officer elections coming up at our organizational meeting in July, that'll be the first, second Monday in July. And related to that, a fun day, opportunity to just myself and Ben relay some things to the board members regarding those positions. There's no decisions being made tonight. It's discussion only, and I hope the rest of the board will join in the discussion, but I'd ask you to present just a little bit of information regarding the role of president and vice president, so presenting interest in people in those positions. As, as president, my primary function associated is the running of the meetings, but going along with that is comprehensive agenda review meeting, you have the week prior with all the administrators and the folks that participate in putting together the agenda. And so that's always a, a way to meet in an hour, hour and a half, long some ten, two hours, depending on the issues to be discussed. And that's an early morning meeting. Your president, your liaison between superintendent and board of education, that's an issue that's got to remember, and I'm going to, you know, do in just a few moments about your experience. The, it entails sometimes almost daily calls and multiple calls during the day from the superintendent or the other administrator that's having a particular issue, whether it's a student, the parent, a regulation policy, whatever it might be. If you didn't have the day or evening, and again, I said it could be many times during the day or evening, have to come attend the meeting. This past year, there's been a lot of that, as you might imagine, with, with COVID. Information was just changing moment by moment and relaying information from the administration down to the, to the board. Or it was just a really epic billion effort all year long, but I think went fairly smoothly, but certainly something to consider. You work very closely with the superintendent and all the administrations, because it's at sometimes daily, and it takes a fair amount of your time, again, either to prepare a few documents and sign them or what have you. It could be running into any issue. So it's constantly moving and thinking and being a sounding board sometimes for the superintendent, offering whatever advice you can to assist him or her in their decision-making, whether it's another administrator, offering hopefully, which please, if you point out the board and give them some, some initial reaction to things that may be happening. It's, it takes a fair amount of time, but it's sort of low worth it, very rewarding, so. Ben? Ben, your voice, President?
Pretty much goes somewhat hand in hand with the president, attending agenda review once a month, filling in for the president. If he's not able to, we're going to be able to hold the meeting and go through it and that's decided by the vice president.
And I, this is my first year in this position for both Timmy and I. Kathy was a, we get credit, so if you have any thoughts or issues or warnings?
I, I think you pretty much, you did a good job of summing it up. The board officers really assist the superintendent and see different vantage points of the viewpoint. You know, they were trying that maybe an announcement was going to go out and you might have intended it to be one way, but they served like a fresh set of peers, not as doing it, but a totally different method. So you're really helping them, you know, to see things on the different vantage point. Each word that you're covering, all means it. If you have a very close working relationship with not only the superintendent, but everyone, the administrative team, you know, just like, you know, the thing and writing and, you know, when, when you have a new set of, or a relatively numb set of district administrators, you know, you really are helping them, you're really making them, to them, and the board, or not just kind of approach you, it's not about approaching the superintendent, but it's really just like a really well-organized team. There's a lot of reading, there's a lot of prep. You need to be available and you need to be present, you know? But it's, but it's very fulfilling and it's very.
Thank you, Kathy. So it's, and as you all will know, I've talked to multiple banks throughout the year, personally, through email chats, to hopefully relay the information that we need to do our jobs. I'm certainly interested in doing the same job next year, but certainly don't want to have anyone else not throw their hat around if they're so willing. The same goes for you, Ben, but.
Yeah, and I just think that I'm going to carry out the duties again for another year. Starting to go on, I don't know.
There any other questions or comments regarding that issue? I know we've had a lot happen over the last several weeks, particularly at the end of the year, so you're missing trying to link them all, but we've had a lot of appreciation days, things like that, and I don't know. And again, I started to write them all down, I remember them all, so I don't want to skip somebody, but. Part of, part of information out there this, this time of year and events. Yeah, I think you might have this any time during the day, this field day, there's, that everything's going on. So with that, anything else? Second open forum, Mr. Luther, or anybody?
We do it one person. Christina Tucker. You're going to mute yourself.
Tucker, welcome.
Can you hear me okay?
I'm sorry?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, very well.
Okay, thank you. It's hard to hear you guys, so I just wanted to make sure. So for anyone that doesn't know me, my name is Christina Tucker, and the board and I know each other by now, and I spoke to you during public comment back on March eighth regarding outrageous bus behavior and concerns, and at that time, no acknowledgement was made. I then emailed you a few times, and all that did was generate a response to continue working with administrators. I then followed up, followed the proper chain of command and spoke to you in executive session on May tenth. And apparently, board members are told not to engage with parents during these meetings. I couldn't find any policy on this, but I never heard a word from any of you that night, or any night for that matter. Then I got a letter from you, well, signed by one of you, on May twenty-first, a letter that failed to address any of my concerns still. It was a deny everything and protect our reputation type letter. I am here, however, not to just complain, I'm actually very happy, and I'm sure you know why. I'm very happy to see the presentation tonight that changes are finally being made. The bus drivers will be trained to protect children, and social emotional needs are finally being spoken about. Every administrator in this meeting has spoken to me time and time again, how nice would it have been to know that my concerns were finally being heard, and motions are being put in place to help the situation. For the past four and a half months, that's all I ever wanted, support and change. Yet I was villainized, ignored, made to feel helpless. I recognize we cannot fix what has happened this past year, but we can make it better moving forward. Board of Education, I've been silenced enough, I have one question for you tonight, and it shouldn't be difficult to answer here, tonight. Are you willing to involve stakeholders, all of them, including parents, in collaborative decision-making and promoting transparency going forward? Our goals should all be the same, what is best for the children. A survey is not enough. Involving parents means back and forth communication. It means things will happen, we will work together to make it better. It means transparency. Let's begin with a simple yes or no tonight. Can you at least give me that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tucker. We determined long ago, it's not a question and answer period, so we're not going to answer any questions. It opens a door to something that we unfortunately won't be able to shut, so I will have.
So you are not willing to say that you will?
Again, this is an open forum for you to speak about the issue, we appreciate this meeting about the issue tonight, and certainly have a member of the administration, or third member of the administration to reach out to you, to talk to you about any issues that you would like to have addressed. Any other open forum? So maybe some next, we do have some informational items, I know the board didn't receive them till now, just to remind you about graduation. We will, if you have proof of your vaccination, if you please upload it so that we have it on file. If you do not have that, it does require a negative VCR within seventy-two hours of the event. Do not have that rapid test within six hours of the event, but we are trying to get a comprehensive panel on all of this, getting ready for graduation. So if you could, please upload that, and I'll, I'll send that to all board members that can get ready for the participation in graduation. They'll all have a seat, and we're going to have everybody, students will report, Mr. Switzer, Mr. Ham, Mr. Stein, they've really worked hard on this. Students will report underneath, and the adults will report up top. We do have to like this information for everyone, so we do have, if we get the information ahead of time, but just being known for the adults, so you can share with the community members that ask you. They will be receiving that kind of fast pass, or like a dizzy roll, so if they have their information or, and we have that, we'll get a fast pass, they will come in to the top. There are four people per graduate that are able to attend, but we will be on the floor at this point, spread out socially a distance, but we will, the board will be handing to all of us. And I think we're really excited, Mr. Switzer's working really hard on it, he's been, it's not easy putting this together, but we're, we're excited that we're all in person together and not eight ceremonies, but one. So it's very, very exciting. Also, just some note, some notes on Mr. Brady, it's a really cool, over-up ceremony, it's going to be a drive through out back, but he's been working hard on that, and you can see the times, if any board member would like to join us, feel free to stop by, we'll be there. And then we weren't able to, the last, the, the last day of school will be that Thursday, and our staff are able to leave that day as well, due to the fact that we had over a hundred eighty days. So our end of the year ceremony will be from one to two thirty on Thursday of next week. So any board members that would like to join us, usually we ask them to speak, and it's a really, really nice way to set the staff off. We do have a, a pretty busy summer, we've got lots of summer school students coming in, day five, summer success, and also sixth, well, sixth one will be in the high school and day five, we have elementary school. So just want to give everybody a little date, but we're looking forward, looking forward to a send-off, to sit here for the end of the day, but I'm proud of you, so. Thank you, Mr. Dan. Something else coming for the board? We do have a need for executive session pursuant to subdivision one, subpatch of section one oh five of the open meetings law, to discuss the employment history of a particular person and matters leading to the appointment, employment, discipline, or removal of a particular person, and pursuant to subdivision three and section one oh eight of the open meetings law, to discuss matters made by federal or state law involving student matters pursuant to FERPA and involving attorney-client privilege matters pursuant to section forty-five oh three of the New York Civil Practice Law and Rules. Have a motion, please? Thank you, Kathy, second? Right? All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go on to the second. Thank you all for attending. Thank you all for attending. Appreciate the attendance online and everyone here, the respondents, all new teachers, congratulations. And thank you all for attending. Hope to talk to you soon, hopefully in person when I'm asked.